Commissioner Evans.
Yes, I am here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Watauski.
Here.
Vice Chair Kinsey.
Here.
Chair Savan.
Recording.
Commissioners Champion and O'Neill are absent.
That is the consent agenda.
Yeah, that's, so the agenda is a little bit wrong, right, Brian? It says presentation.
Yeah, I think there should be under, right, the minute should be under consent, so we can have a motion on the consent agenda for the minutes of the February 6th meeting. We can move that there, but can we have a motion for the for the, for the minutes?
Yep. I make a motion to approve the February 6th minutes.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh. Right, none. Through the. Yes, with the public comment. Any public comment in general?
There.
Anybody online?
No, and information on participating in this meeting and for.
Just, I think he got cut out on there, but in person you can.
There are no public commenters online.
No public, thank you.
Chair Savan, did you want me to start on item number two? Let me go forward.
That's the last meeting, right?
This, this is a follow up to that from the last meeting. It's similar to.
Alright.
Yeah, so we're just gonna, we have, I'll just go briefly over this and then hand it over to Reggie Paulding. And so just to start off with the last meeting, I discussed some of the needs on Colton Hall and the needs for repointing and on the exterior of the building. The other, the drainage needs that we had on there, but for anybody just to repeat, because this is in the agenda again, that, you know, Council Resolution nineteen dash one six six appropriated a hundred fifty eight thousand dollars through the NCIP Neighborhood Community Improvement Program for restoration on Colton Hall for repointing for the work done in nineteen seventy three when they took off the plaster and added the Portland cement on the side and there are ferris nails inside there as well. So there is damage coming in from rain, improper drainage on the building as well. So when we have wet seasons, that damages that stone, that Carmel stone, which is a very soft stone that we have on there. So there's a number of studies that have been done on the facility. From what I've read before, also, there was originally like a coating that was done. They're not sure exactly what nineteen seventy three, they added something out there when they took off the plastered coat on the stone. That is basically worn off. But Architectural Resources Group as part of the, as part of that NCIP funding did a project in twenty twenty three, reconfirming some of the needs on their, in terms of specific areas, the highest areas of damage, replacing the Portland cement with a natural hydraulic lime mortar, which is an NHL mortar, and also looking at the backsplash and different areas where the, you have the concrete running straight up to the stone. And when it rains, it can pool up or backsplash on there and damage that stone further. So part of that is that I will mention on here, last year, I was unsuccessful in getting a grant from National Park Service, which was actually National Park Service and IMLS, Institute of Museum and Library Services, which the president has cut all funding and all grants to IMLS as well right now. Those projects for Save America's Treasures, we are not sure if those are going to come back again, but those are typically one to one matching funds. And we knew that we had, we needed more funding to complete that project. As a part of my hope at that point was to add, ask the federal government for matching funds to restore on Colton Hall. But as I mentioned, those federal grants have all been canceled. We're not sure if the program is going to continue this kind of, this coming year. So, and we're not sure where, it's a large ask for this, this coming here. So the funds are incomplete in terms of what's needed for the building at this time. And so I'm recommending that the original NCIP submission, which was done by prior chair Kimber Peak, and Kimber has resigned from the museum commission. So I want to just ask Reggie to come up here and Reggie, if you can introduce yourself and give, show off your samples and talk about the next steps, if you can, please. Thank you.
Uh, yes, I will. Thanks, Brian, and hello, Commissioner. So my name is Reginald Paulding. I'm a senior engineer with the city in the Public Works Department. And I'm the staff representative to the NCIP Committee. In that position, I work on multiple different projects, one of which includes the Colton Hall restoration project. And so I have some slide sets here that I am gonna show you if I can get into the presentation mode. Alright, um. So I started with the city in January of twenty twenty three, so a little over two years now. And in that position, like I said, I work on the NCIP. One of the first projects that I, I took on was Colton Hall. And just want to share, so I have about fifteen or so slides. And then I also have some actual rock from Colton Hall that's, that's broken off, so we can take a look at that. So Colton Hall, here's some, a photo of an early, early shot of Colton Hall. Another shot back when, so kind of a rendering. So just some quick history, Colton Hall was originally constructed from eighteen forty six to eighteen forty nine by Walter Colton. It was the location for California Constitutional Convention in September, October of eighteen forty nine. Following that, from eighteen forty nine to eighteen ninety six, it was a town hall and school, which was one of that first photo we, we showed. In eighteen fifty four, the, the jail structure was constructed. But it was, it was not connected to Colton Hall as it is today. In eighteen fifty five, a plaster finish was installed over the exposed stone walls, which was what Brian had referenced earlier. And then in eighteen sixty nine, the connecting portion from the jail to the Colton Hall called the hyphen was constructed. And eighteen seventy eight, the East Portico with the staircase, which we're all very familiar with, was, was constructed.
May I ask, prior to that being constructed, how was access to the second floor? Was it interior or?
So prior to the, the staircase that's out there, there's actually, if you look inside Colton Hall, you'll see like, like a trust window where you have like the glass window and you could see the, the bricks on there and there's a beam right there and that's on the side. So on the side of the building, they didn't, used to have the staircase going up to the front. So during the convention, they came up on the side and they actually built the extension of the back at a, at a later time as well, the back part of the building.
And eighteen ninety nine, the state of California took over the property and established some form of a historical monument at the property, the building. In nineteen thirty nine, the city established the Colton Hall Museum, and then there was some extensive renovations, I want to say from, probably from around nineteen thirty nine until nineteen forty six or forty, and then they restored the second floor of Colton Hall. In nineteen fifty six, the jail closed. In nineteen seventy to nineteen seventy six, there was another extensive rehabilitation renovation of Colton Hall, which in this frame, timeframe included removal of that exterior lime plaster to, and to expose the, the front as you, as we see it now. But then there was also some repointing of exposed stone work, unfortunately with a much harder cement mortar, which would be something more typical for brick work. The problem with the cement mortar, which we'll get into more, is that it is harder than the stone. And as it's been explained to me, what you want with a mortar is you want your mortar to be softer than the stone. Because what you'll see right now, if we went out and looked, you'll see a lot of hairline cracks in the, in the stones. So what happens is something has to give, and the softest material is what gives. And since the mortar is much stronger than the stone, the stone is what's giving. And then, so in nineteen seventy two, part of that remodel, we have the first floor city offices.
And what, what, again, what, this is a fascinating history. What was the first floor used before nineteen seventy two? Was that part of the museum?
Well, you know, up until nineteen fifty six, that was the police station downstairs.
That was the.
Police station.
Well, the police station was downstairs.
At least, the police were downstairs, and that's before they built El Cortel across the street. And then they were looking, you know, when the library was built from, moved from Van Buren over here to Pacific, they had looked at whether they were going to move the police station and Dennis, if there's.
It was the. Before they moved the police station.
Yeah, it was the police station, definitely. And also the police judge had office. My former office was where the police judge was in residence.
Because he used to have, that's what the hyphen is for, because the hyphen is for when they had the courts and the jail and they could walk people directly in and through the jail, like where we have the back entrance right there. That's not the main entrance to the jail. That's it, kind of like the jail yard, right?
That used to be the jail yard, that door, access to the, the wall, a wall yard.
Okay, so to, just to finish up, the twentieth century, kind of a very, this is a very brief history of, of Colton Hall though. So in nineteen eighty two, there was some drainage improvements on the west side, west elevation of Colton Hall, which is what faces now Dutra Street and, and the parking lot. And then in nineteen ninety two, there were a series of seismic retrofits to the building, including what you see now on both Colton Hall and the jail, the chimneys, those are not original. Those are kind of recreations from nineteen ninety two, where they put those steel reinforcements around them. So then fast forward to the twenty first century. So in two thousand and four, there was some repair and reconstruction of that East Portico staircase. And then in twenty eighteen, we have a, a large scale ADA accessibility improvements on the west side of the building, including stairway, porch and elevator lift that gets people up to the museum. And then the door and west wing, all of that on that, that back, the west side, the Dutra Street side, and then the access ramp that goes into the first floor community development office, that was all done in twenty eighteen. So here we have, again, a picture, this is the east, east elevation of Colton Hall, what we're all very familiar with. Just another rendering or another photo from the city website, again decorated for a holiday season. So to get into some of why we're here today. So here, this is an example of after a rain event back in winter of twenty twenty three. You can see where flaking, so these flakes of the stone. So what have, Brian had referenced, so you have the brick, you have concrete curb, and then you have the, the Colton Hall. So what happens in heavy rain events, you get this splashing, right? So the rain hits the ground, hits this concrete, hits the brick, and it splashes back up onto the building. That backsplash weakens the, the, the stone. Right? So that contributes to that. And then what you have here is you'll have, so you can see here on the southeast end, and we have some comparison, the condition of the building in twenty twelve, the condition in twenty twenty three, so eleven year time. And you can see where it's, it's deteriorated. And then here, this is a, a picture from the northeast elevation, again, right outside of the housing office right now. And you can see underneath that window how there's significant deterioration, again, because of the same situation, brick, concrete curb, flushed right up against Colton Hall. Here you can see, this is along King Street where we have, you know, significant, it's just eroding away. So kind of here lined up, top to bottom, number one, I think the number six kind of recommendations. So repointing is important, but based on the reports that I've read, it's actually not the most important thing, according to the experts. They recommend improving the drainage to the, to the whole site, Colton Hall, the jail, the hyphen. All of that is, is more important than repointing. So improve storm drainage and waterproofing, addressing the downspouts situation, because right now the downspouts kind of are oriented in ways that push water back up against the building. There's suppose, from what I, what we understand, there are water pools around the current jail, because it's kind of at a lower elevation than Colton Hall. And that cooling is, it causes moisture to wick up into the building. And it affects, it's, it is affecting the, the foundation. They also recommend that we allow the building to breathe. By breathe, we mean remove this brick, concrete curbing from around the, the building. Have more of a, you know, kind of at least a foot wide dirt area around the entire structure. Perhaps planting, landscaping with native plants to require little to no irrigation. Again, we don't want to introduce any additional water to the structure. Then we get into repointing, replace this nineteen seventy three Portland cement plaster with more consistent lime stucco based mortar. That would have been done back in the, in the nineteenth century. And this will help protect the stone from cracking, which is what I had talked about earlier.
How deep is the, is the concrete pointing? How, how deep did that go in? Is that gonna all have to be pulled?
That all has to be pulled out, yeah. I don't know. It's my understanding that I think that they have tools, it's all handwork though. I mean, it's, it's pretty delicate, a handwork. And I, yeah, so I, I guess they would have to get in there and find out, go until there's no more of this cement, Portland cement based mortar remaining.
So in that foot wide channel you're talking about, is it, is it gonna put a French drain in there that basically is gonna?
Well, we would have to design it, and that we haven't gotten to that point. I mean, I at points where, say, we'd have to look at, say, do a survey, look at how the ground slopes. So I think for the most part, on the front, on the east side of the, of the building, it, it appears to me that the, the ground is pretty sloped away from Colton Hall. On the west side, I think, which is why they had done this work back in the nineteen eighties. It does, it appears again that the ground slopes into Colton Hall. But I mean, I think we would have to get a survey to kind of look at that at a more detailed level to see exactly how things slope, if they're low points, and just try to manage, in, in one of those ways to manage it would be with a drain.
Can I add on that too? Just, you know, on that west side of that, and that's where it goes into like the property and housing offices. If you look at those windows, when those windows are open, the, the, that west side of the building drops down, I'd say, what, about three to four feet? Like the actual, the building is here, like the, the, the side of it. So that is a pretty hard, so there is a drain currently there that goes in there, but I think it would be as, as Reggie's talking about, like getting a full design of that side, because there's the side of the, you know, coming in on Dutra Street where you see, you're at Dutra, and there is the landscaping for the jail, and then that drops down also three to four feet into there, and there's kind of a, a low point there. And then if you look at that, I guess that's what the south side of the jail, which has, that does have landscaping around it right now. So if you go over there, they've extended that, it's like natural landscaping, so it'd be pretty similar to that, where you've got the landscaping around on that side. But I think on that west side, it currently does have like the, the French drain up just in front of the property and housing spot, but I don't know about the other side. So that would be the full side would need a, a new design.
What about the north end?
Well, the north end right now is probably, I would say, in some of the worst condition, right? The King Street side of the building is, is really deteriorated. Some of the worst, you know, examples of kind of that cracking is, 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 can be seen on that west side. So, and there's no drain there currently. So we, that would be a place, I think, right? We would have to definitely look at it and, and, you know, we probably need to. At a minimum, we need to pull that hardscape away from the structure though.
All we need is money, right?
All we need is money. Sure, you can do anything with money. Yes.
Speaking of money, do either of you have any estimate of how much is?
Well, I was, I was gonna, I was gonna get there. But I think, was there one more question?
Do, do we really want the jail? I don't, I don't know what.
Do we want the jail? That's, that's a, that's a higher level question.
That's it. I will say, yes, and there are very few jails in all of California that are of this era. You know, if we look at what's available, that kind of tells this story of, you know, I mean, it's, it's California. This is like, you know, California's eighteen fifty and that was created eighteen fifty four up until nineteen fifty six. And so I think that that's the jail really represents early California that very few cities can do. I think there might be a couple of gold town, you know, gold rush towns that might have like one or two era jails, but most of those have been demolished over time. So I think we need to keep something like that for posterity.
When I worked in that office, we used to have fourth grade class, I mean, kids come through the jail and spend time. And I would send Bill Fell or Rick Marvin just to go by that, that area and say, please let me out. I'm trapped in here.
We still have kids go in there. That's, that's great.
I remember your lecture on the state of the law in the early period and, and certainly if, if we did something with the jail, that isn't interesting.
Yeah, I think Brian is involved with updating the interpretive panels, tell the story of the jail and of early California and that some of the major events that happened in that jail. And I think you're, you're referring to what the, that lecture, that talk on Monterey, Wilder and Woolley.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a very, very good.
So the last three items we have here uh for our kind of wish list for exterior repairs. And I guess that's one other point, uh, this, this, all this, I, all these items on this list are exterior items only. I would say both structures, Colton Hall and the jail could equal have an equally long list for interior uh work. Um, so as Brian had talked about, there's a series of of like of nails that have been embedded in the north wall. I I couldn't tell you why they're there um or how they got there. But regardless, they're actually contributing to the cracking of those stones. So those nails need to be removed. And in cases where um the, I guess there are techniques and methods to repair um some of these stones. But when it they're beyond repair, uh, we we should look to replace a a few of the stones that are beyond repair. Um, then there's repair and restore wood and iron trim. So if you go and look along, especially the windows, um, on the, uh, what is it, the east uh east face? Uh, where the the stucco was removed, the wood was untreated. Originally, the wood, there was no treatment for the wood. And then when in nineteen seventies, when they removed the um stucco, the wood remained untreated. So now it's in increasingly worse condition. So the wood frames around the windows need to be restored, repaired.
Were they redwood?
I don't know what wood they are, but yeah, they're they're not in great condition. The windows themselves are not in great condition. Um, there's iron bars on the jail that are kind of in need of some uh TLC. The doors, the the gutters, the fascia along the roof, the downspouts. Um, the stair, these east portico stairs, which I think, if you remember the timeline, were most recently had any significant work was in two thousand and four, which unfortunately for all of us was twenty one years ago. Um, so the stairs have some soft spots and some, they're showing their age, um, and and they need some work. Finally, um, kind of just like exterior treatment on the stones themselves. A question of whether or not to restore the lime plaster exterior coat um around the entire building. I know that there's been conversation about this over the years. And when I came on board, I had heard, you know, kind of the, I guess, what office water cooler discussion was. You know, in order to get the building on um the National Register of Historic Places, then the 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 lime plaster with the pink color would need to be restored. Uh, the rationale for that was because that is the historic period of of what, of interest? I I forget the exact terminology. But specifically eighteen forty nine to nineteen, I'm sorry, eighteen forty nine to eighteen seventy eight is the high point of historic relevance for Colton Hall, as I understand it. And that in order to qualify for the historic, a placement on the historic register, the building would need to be returned as best as possible uh to its look, exterior look at that time. If that city chooses not to do that, then um as as Brian had alluded to back in, when they removed that um uh plaster coating, there was some kind of a treatment to the stone. So we could look into doing some other uh or refreshing or or a new, more more recent technology on on sealing uh the stone facade. So that that kind of brings us to, and then this is just an example of the original, well, not original, because there were other NCIP applications. But this is the twenty eighteen one that the current funding on the books for the original hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars uh references, uh, the the repointing was envisioned in two phases. Uh, phase one was a hundred and fifty eight thousand with a second equal hundred and fifty eight for phase two. Um, phase two never was never funded. So that's the end of that, the PowerPoint, but I also did have, um, so let me stop sharing here. And then um what I did want to show.
The hundred and fifty thousand is still sitting in the bank?
It's at this date, it's a roughly a hundred and forty four thousand. Uh, we have done since, we use that when we do some studies. Um, but just 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 what you've got, so you can see that we're talking about it. These are actual Colton Hall stones that have chipped, cracked, broken off. So that's that's what we're talking about.
And what period roughly?
Uh, those those were all, I I collected those personally, all since January twenty twenty three.
For those, January, January twenty twenty three above, just by, just by Reggie pulling this up.
And just add something when you're ready. You go ahead.
I I would just add this, similar stones, which you'll see also, like along the 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 exterior wall, the the low wall that we have over over here. Um, you know, when they built this whole kind of complex and started building the gardens and everything, nineteen thirty nine, where you see the stones are starting to fall apart off there, just on Pacific Street as well, just because of very similar issues that we have here. And I'll turn it over to Dennis.
No, I I just want to make a comment about uh Reggie's show and tell there. Um, some of you remember in my Colton Hall office, I had a mantle there and I had fragments that had fallen, uh, you know, around twenty ten and onward. What I notice about Reggie's examples is that these are much larger than they used to be. So this shows to me much more significant deterioration and and damage to the stone walls.
So what what's the impact of plastering the outside of the building? Is that gonna?
So I I the main advantage of the plaster is that it keeps the water off of the stone. And if you remember, um, what was it, the Pacific Valley Bank, what the down on the corner of Alvarado Street? A couple of years ago, where that wall collapsed? Um, I think they had some similar issues. And um, I think what I I mean, I that was when I first came to town. But it's my understanding that the the stucco had been compromised and maybe you.
Yeah, I remember that was waterlogged. There was a very heavy water storm on that too, a water come. And that was another, that was on the, you know, the old Alvarado building, right there on the corner and on, right at the corner of Alvarado. Yeah, the governor's house. And yeah, the whole wall, I saw the photos and it just like the plaster kind of separated off. So that's all about like how to, in, you know, making sure that whatever's done is done to standards today. And that's why we're not sure about what the, if the Ferris nails that were on there, were they part of some earlier renovation that was done? You know, AR ARG that did some of the research on those architectural research resources group. They were not sure what the nails were for at that time or when they were really installed. But um, just to add on, I think the thought is like, if you look here in council chambers and you look at this um, McComas painting behind you, right in the center is Colton Hall painted as red. Um, right there, and that's before, this is going to be before we had, um, you know, the renovations happening. And so at the time was that very light pink, we still have samples of the light pink uh plaster. And you'll even see it on the building still, still on the, I guess, in those of the south side, I think that is. I think it's on the south side of the building. There's still a little bit of that by the hyphen, like above the hyphen area. There's some um original kind of pink plaster on that one side of the building. But they kept so that north and east facades, which are actually some of the the sides that are getting um, the north side gets a lot of the brunt as as Reggie's talking about. And then the east side is is the front. So that's what people like to see, you know, they like to see the front of the building. So it's on the side of what is the kind of the impact of what people like to see is is honestly part of it. You know, there's the historic building, but then there's also how people like to see the brick versus a plaster building.
Brian, I know you um you struck out on the federal grants, but I wondered if there are nonprofit or private institutions that would be concerned. I mean, it's such a sensitive building that there may be money available through them.
Yeah, I think, but there's also just so many, there's a lot of different needs, like the inside as well as 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 Reggie mentioned, that was, this is just the outside, because there's pieces up there. There's like the electrical, which is some of the, like, I just mean that there's like electrical HVAC. There's a lot of other components to that building, just outside of just this kind of piece right here of the drainage and that. So for example, the electrical, when we had Christmas in the Adobes and we were heating up cider, you know, and flipped the breaker and didn't realize the breaker is actually, uh, with building seven, engineering. The breaker was not in the building because they've added power over time. So some of the breakers outside the building are panels are downstairs, they're outside, they're further down the street. And so it's like something that's been done over time, they've added, and it hasn't been deliberate in terms of their and then having people and collections in there where you don't have controlled um heating and ventilation is always a concern with either archival materials, care of the building and people, right? So there's all those kind of components there. So I'm just meaning like, there's a lot of need there in that building. And of course, if we can find it, but I know, talking to like um Community Foundation in Monterey County, where we do have the current grant for the interpretation of the inside. And that's the, I believe that's the Devoe Fund, and that one's fifty thousand dollars annual that we can apply to up to, which is not nearly enough to do the work that here we're talking about on here. So um, and I will say, like, even looking on my side, where the IMLS, I was just doing research for the state of California for museums, that's ten million dollars gone from the state. Statewide investments in museums, and that funding has helped places like Cooper Malera, has helped out San Juan Batista Mission, has helped out Carmel Mission, has helped out First Theater. So a lot of other sites are also competing for funds. And you know, you look at Sherman Quarters, needs a new roof, right? Larkin House, you walk past Larkin House right now and, you know, the balcony is sinking, right? So there's a lot of similar needs all around. I'm just mentioning that that we can try to ask, but there's a lot of needs all throughout this whole region for our historic buildings that we need support for.
Elon Musk.
Yeah, yeah, good luck.
Uh, I mean, I I think the the purpose for, at least in my mind, for for, you know, kind of this conversation today is to start the conversation, maybe again, I, it's clear that there's been an ongoing um conversation in the city of Monterey about Colton Hall, um, where you can see those timelines where there was significant effort, money obviously spent to renovate, uh, rehab the building. And and we're just, it's it's just a constant need, right? When it's like your own house, when you have, you know, an older house, it just takes constant care, constant, you know, work to keep it up. And um, we're just in a place right now where we need to, you know, kind of get on the city's radar. Um, there are a lot of needs in the city of Monterey. Um, and we need to get on the city's radar and and and, you know, just let people know that this is something that needs to happen. Um, and we need to focus kind of on, um, I would say the bigger items first. So one thing that I would request as the NCIP representative, I think, and and Brian, you know, part of the agenda item today was to identify, right, a representative from this committee to come to NCIP, to kind of bring this issue to the committee, to the NCIP committee, and kind of be the face um for for the project. But I would also recommend that we kind of kind of work down that list that we had looked at, kind of starting with the drainage and going down uh from there. So maybe repurposing the the remaining one hundred and forty four thousand roughly to look at the drainage issues um, and see how far we can get with that. And then also look at some additional funds, put in a request for, you know, another project to um, you know, to do some of the other work and see how.
You may want to phase, like you said, phase the project, because you hate to put a big lump in there against other competing NIP. If they're, I I think the NIP committee would recognize how important it is. And if they were done constructively in a phased amount every year, like you said.
I, yeah, no, I I think there's support. Um, and I guess, uh, Bill, uh, um, your question about total cost. I mean, and I was looking at the the kind of the scope of work earlier this afternoon and just kind of a back of the envelope estimate for me, I would say we're talking total roughly somewhere in the order of five hundred thousand to seven hundred fifty thousand. Um, to get this all done, all of the items, I think, you know, probably the faster, it's one of those situations where the faster you do things, the less it costs. In some, in in I, in some instances, when we drag the projects out, they're just more expensive. So, I mean, that's a downside of phasing. Um, but, I mean, we got, I guess we just go and see kind of what, because there are a lot of competing demands on NCIP funds, uh, not just in, you know, other grant funds and city funds. Everything is, right, we just had on Tuesday the presentation for the um replacement of the jail, oh, I'm sorry, of the police station, fire station, you know, community safety building, which, you know, if if you weren't watching, that was the the low end number was one hundred twenty two million. Um, so, and it only goes up from there, right? So, I mean, there's just a lot of needs in the city, but if you don't say something, nothing's gonna happen.
Can I ask on that, Reggie? So I think what we would look at on this commission is possibly, would this be essentially like a phase two? Or uh basically of this or an expansion of the prior uh NCIP approved funding? Or would this be a modification?
As I see it, I think there's two, there's there's at least two things to do. I would say the first item would be to request that the current funding be uh kind of repositioned to work on the 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 drainage situation. Um, and then we request uh some a a new funding for repointing. Um, because like I said, all the reports we have, the all the conversations I've had with, you know, kind of like, you know, architectural preservation, uh, you know, experts, it's that we really need to adjust the drainage issue, I mean, right? Not not the, the the mortar, the repointing is important. But the actual drainage and backsplash and those types of issues is harming the building at this point more than the um mortar, if that makes sense.
So what's your estimate for the?
Drainage?
Drainage.
I would say that's, I mean, we don't have a final design, and but we did kind of look at it at a very preliminary level. I would say that's 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 the, that's in that two hundred thousand dollar range. It's gonna be, if not more, um, it's gonna be a large percentage of the total. Um, like, so if we say, if we say that the work, we need five hundred thousand dollars worth of work at Colton Hall, I would say the drainage is two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand of that five hundred thousand.
And the repointing then?
The repointing, um, so ARG identified some very targeted areas for repointing, and that could probably be done in a fifty to seventy five thousand dollar uh price range.
Would you be willing to kind of put together the the list of things that need to be done? And you your back of the envelope amount for each one of them would uh might cost? So we can see, you know, what sort of come up with a plan for trying to get some of that done through NIP or NCIP?
Yes, I can, I can work um with Ryan.
And and I think I I would ask if there's a commissioner that we could identify that would take the lead on this. Some somebody so we have like a point in context so we could work on this. I'd like to, I really would like to put this on the uh, you know, have a commissioner put this on proposal for NCIP, because I really, I I find that this is a high need for us to really identify this and having somebody that's going to speak at the, at those meetings and really talk about why it's important that we do this. And having somebody that's going to speak at the, at those meetings and really talk about why it's important that we do this now.
Willing to do it, I would nominate Bob. Bob has a lot of history with Colton Hall, plus he has a lot of history with the NIP committee, being involved with New Monterey. And you know, most of the players that are still around, or some of them that are still around, I guess. Would you be willing to do that? Is that acceptable?
Yeah, I would, I would do that.
Great.
All right. So we have Commissioner Evans on there. So Reggie, I think you and I can communicate also too, and then we'll connect back with Commissioner Evans on everything there. And I appreciate it. Any other questions or anything?
Appreciate your work on that, Reggie.
Yeah, thank you so much for the work and thanks for the examples for bringing those in. We appreciate you.
All right. No, you're welcome.
Now I gotta figure out how to use your slides.
They can take those rocks up to upstairs at the museum and they could be sold for auction up.
Thousand dollars a piece, yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that would be a great way to bring some money into Colton Hall. Absolutely. All right. Well, I'm gonna, and I'm gonna head out. I guess you can sign me off here, Brian.
Yeah, I will. And I'll say there's no public attendees, so there's no public comment.
And look, there's someone online. Do we want to look?
There's no, there's no attendees online.
Okay.
Yes, we are ready for the informational reports and snap comment.
I have a number three.
So.
I'm sorry, I missed the music. Update on the music.
Music, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that is, that's me. So if you looked at the agenda, we have our current accounts balance for the chamber music account is $4,865.67. In 2019, that series cost $4,395.50 for three concerts and chair rentals. So that was the last time that we had, the series was in 2019. And going back to the reports, our staff concerned that the balance was decreasing in terms of the, the funding coming in from the concert to sponsor it. And $1,500 was raised towards the Monterey 250 when there was going to be the 250th anniversary in 2020. So this is prior to when I was here for the concert. So they had announced three concerts, but those were not held based on, because of the pandemic. So, and I know this has been of interest to the commission. In returning regular concerts to Colton Hall. And we've done a couple of like pop-up programs, like bringing in some music and youth music in there, but not at the same, not the same program that we had pre-pandemic. But staffing has been limited in the museums division, as we've talked about during this. And additionally, standing subcommittees, and we've had the city attorneys speak on this before, are not recommended of going through like a subcommittee that happens every year. So, but staffs were recommending that we resume concerts again at Colton Hall. And place a call for three to four concerts to be held this year in 2025. And so my thought is that we then bring back the proposals for these back to the full. Commission and work possibly at the next meeting and bring back some proposals for the commission. And so I would like some, you know, interesting, you know, would like to hear feedback in terms of having three to four concerts coming in for this year. Proposed budget per concert and timing for hosting. And so along with that, the, you know, as we've mentioned before, we're currently in the process of the community foundation grant for interpretive panels and art displays. We're going to be ordering like art display panels and for the inside of Colton Hall. So we can have more art and displays in there as well as changing out some of the benches. Cause those are not really good for concerts or for students. And we'll keep some of them for, for historic purposes, but we'll keep, put other ones on the back and, or in the storage. And. But we would still have like our Christmas in the Adobes and rotating art and other kind of speakers and music programs in addition. But wanted to hear back from the commission about the proposal to hold that and bring it back to the, bring it back to the full commission at the June meeting, if we have the response by then.
So the concerts then would be in the fall. If we're going to be in 2025 and we're not planning, start planning until June.
Yes. I mean, we would be approving, I mean, if we would be bringing back proposals. I think if, as if we're right now in April, I think the, the thought would be to come back with, do a call possibly next month. Like in May, April or May, do a call for musicians, post that out and then bring back. Proposals to the full commission in the June meeting and then look at whether that's August or looking at the timeline for presenting. So either summer or fall. But if we wanted to do them at a different time, we could also bring it back in 2026. Cause I don't have the budget also for this fiscal, coming fiscal year, just to mention that also as of July 1, we haven't done our budget discussions yet.
Are we still doing chair rentals?
No, we have some chairs that we store at the garage and I think, I don't know how old those are. Problem with those just is that. We had an inner, what's we call, we have like, we call it interdepartment charge where we actually had to have another department staff help us actually bring our own chairs over. Because if we don't have, there are all these big trolleys in that East Garage. And they're really hard to navigate and move in to set up those chairs. So that's why the hope was is that with this grant, that we would be able to buy a couple, possibly seedings or rack that we would store nearby. At either inside Colton Hall or at a nearby building so that we could just bring them over and not have to worry about going to the garage and renting a truck or something like that to bring them over. But that would be the hope is that we would have chairs that we could easily access specifically for that.
You know, I think once we show, once we have a concert or two, we can go back for another fundraising. I think we keep track of the emails of all the attendees and people were very generous in giving money. It's a very, I think the locals really liked this event. And I would concur, you know, if possible, be nice to have three concerts this fall.
Brian, can you tell me what the 4395, how did that break down? How much should we pay musicians or pay staff and whatever? What are the costs?
So I don't, I didn't have the breakdown because I was trying to look through the field reports and I didn't have that. But I would say that this does not include staff costs. This doesn't include staff costs, doesn't, doesn't include anything on the staff side. So that was basically noted at that time that there was not. But I would think it's often, and Dennis might, I don't know if you recall any of this, of the, the cost in there. But I would say from working in library programs as well, there are times when you have a performer at different levels. It might be $500, $1,000 or $1,500, you know, or even more. If you have a well-known person, it's going to be. Quite a bit more, you know, but I think on, on average, you're looking at 500 to 1,000 to 1,500 for, for a performer.
I doubt, uh, the old timing, you might recall you were on that subcommittee, Bob, but I don't think we ever hit over 1,000. We kept it, of course, this was three or four years ago. It was in that range of 500 to 750.
Okay.
Yeah, 600.
A woman who runs the bandbox in San City has been very, in fact, she was one of the performers, right? At Colton Hall unknown, she is very good about local, uh, local talent too. Be good to contact her.
Yeah, she's, she was, she's a great source for that too, yeah. But I think, I think if we're, I think that was just kind of a question, is there somewhat of a not to exceed, especially knowing how limited our funding is on this? And that, you know, what I didn't want to do, cause I think, you know, going back to what you mentioned, Commissioner Wukowski, is that, you know, doing a call for either sponsors or a call for donations, you know, before or after would be needed. Because that, you know, if we spent, you know, $3,000 on this, next year, we only have $1,600 left in the budget, right? And so that's where I was, I was thinking like, we either look for community sponsors or, you know, possible donations for, for people for attending those events.
What we did in the past was we always sent out a letter with an ask, like in January. And our first concert was in like March. And so it would be, I think, appropriate to send out an ask early on when we send out the, the. Yeah, the call for music, send, send out an ask at the same time saying the, the Colton Hall concerts are on the way back. We need your help.
Yes. And I'll say also, I think from what I saw in the letters, they were basically. It was a recommended donation, sort of the thing, which was like for people, like if you, if you donate, you get, we're going to reserve two seats, right? Because, you know, for Colton, that's, that's where it was on some of the letters that I had, that I've gone back and looked at on there. So.
I think you also.
Same thing.
Yeah.
You also question the timing and having worked with a lot of senior groups, especially they like the afternoons. And we don't have the problem with the lighting then if we do afternoon that we would at night. Like Sunday afternoon seemed to be a good time to bring in a lot of people. It's more convenient for a lot of folks.
Yeah, I appreciate.
Sort of takes away the aspect of a candlelit concert.
But that's, that has its own problems.
Yeah, I will say for us also that the afternoons are easier to plan for too. And I, I would say that would be our preference coming in is to look, it started, started off with that and kind of start off with a couple of these afternoon concerts. As Commissioner Kimsey mentioned as well about getting there. Because getting all the additional lighting and up there, it does take a lot of work on that side for then getting people working with their schedules. So, yeah, and I, I think that, you know, even some of the senior, there are like senior living facilities out here and they do, they like to do outings and tours as well. So I think, you know, that's, those are also possibilities for groups like that, you know, for getting people outside. But afternoons, and I will say that when we've had the concerts at Colton Hall recently, when we've done like midday concerts. The staff at the buildings, you know, the staff that work underneath are really happy enough, like the music, cause the music, they can hear the music downstairs. So those kind of like midday, midweek concerts are also in the future also a possibility. But I think this one, if we did three in the fall. I think what we would want to do is just kind of set updates, especially if they are Sundays, we could do something like Sundays. We would just want to, we would just look at what other competing events are out there. Cause we try to not to make sure that they're not on the same day as.
This is symphony.
Yes, exactly. You want to make sure that other groups aren't having competing events at that time. And then we could come back and bring back this, our proposal. With the call to music in June, I think that's.
And as far as stabbing, could the service learners help with that?
Uh, the service owners, you mean for the, yeah, so I think we've had, it depends on who's available. Like we've had some rotating interns from, you know, different Middlebury or CSU Monterey Bay at different times that have, that have helped with that. And also a call. You know, we could do more callouts for volunteers, because people, when we've had special events, like, you know, for decorating and different things like that. I think it's easier to, you know, get some of our volunteers, because we do have our museum volunteers that help out with different events. And I think during the daytime might be easier for some of them to help out.
So what's the next step?
I guess the next step is just, I just wanted to get the feedback in this and bring back the call from, you know, staff will prepare a call for music. We can look at like internally, like how much our budget is for this kind of event. Bring back proposals at our next meeting, which is I believe June 3rd, June 5th. June 5th, okay. And then we'll bring back that and then discuss dates and everything like that at our, at our June meeting. And then get them on the calendar and then start working on the letters to people saying concert series is back. We're looking forward to bringing you back. Now, I think that would be our, our next step.
And we're ready for item four.
I don't know if there's anybody waiting to make a con, comment online. You may raise your hand, but I don't see anybody raising their hand. All right, an item four and. This is me, right? I'll start off with one thing that I think I may have, I don't know if I added on here, but it is on. I just want to briefly talk. Updates on the expanded path of history and where we're at with that. And so we've, you know, brought that back to council and discussed that. And so what I recently did is I went through and I looked at all of the property owners. Because who actually operates and lives in a building or rents that building may not actually be the property owner. So I looked through all the records to get the, the owner and I'm working on a letter. And then I'm going to create a website for the path of history on the city website. And the path of history city website will basically have like the history of it. And then also a link to the report for the expanded path of history. So that I can mail a letter to all the people that are, have an address that's possibly added on this expanded path of history. Just saying, we are planning to add you on this path of history. Are there any concerns? Like, you know, do you have any questions for us? And we want to provide that. That would be our, our next step on there. So it's creating a, I'll be working with our city manager's office on creating that website. And I'm creating the content now, but then also the next part is just, once we get that, I already have the list of everything for everybody's contact, sending them that. And then coming back and we're also on the backend have been working on creating, I have an intern right now, working on creating all the content on our app and website for all of the sites. All the sites is not published yet, but we're working on creating the content so that once we get everyone's buy-in from it, we will post it up and add it to our digital content. And then we also have a possibility of some, you know, looking at directional signage or what the next steps are for that aspect, as we've talked about. So that's going to be coming next. And so going on to the, kind of the updates and activities, next Monday, I have my meeting with the city manager, finance department, human resources. Regarding our next fiscal year budget and we'll be working on their, I'm requesting increased hours so that we can increase Colton Hall back to seven days a week. And so we will see if what gets, you know, especially with the uncertainty of local budgets and federal budgets and state budgets at this time. I'm not sure what we'll get, but I think it's a, it's something that we need to ask for every year, you know, to restore back that. So I'll be working on that and I'll give you guys an update for June and when the next steps or the budget sessions are too. The Western Flyer left, or I think I saw, I know I saw Commissioner Thomas and I saw Commissioner Wukowski there. I served as the judge of the photo contest, of the 1940s photo contest over there. So I was doing that, there was part of that and it was a great event. The, they listed the library as a sponsors, but it's really the museums as, myself, Francesca, a number of our museum docents and volunteers were out there helping out at a tent. So it was, I think it was a really great event because it was a community event that was kind of low key, but a lot of people showed up. It's important. We had a lot of music and other activities there. The, in the first, we're looking at the first week of October of, but this, we're going to be holding, the California State Supreme Court is going to be holding their oral arguments in Colton Hall. First time since the 1950s. And so we will have high security for those dates from CHP out here for the security of the Supreme Courts. But it'll be great because it's one to two days where you'll see them back in here in holding sessions there. And it will also be live streamed as well. So I've been working with the state Supreme Court Office on coordinating that.
Will the public be able to attend or no?
Yes. And so they're just going to be, have to be screened off, limited seating. They're, they're going to be bringing in a couple of classes too. They're, they look at bringing in like different, usually you can look online, they'll have their different cases that they are researching. So typically, I'm going to have to figure out how the, the timing is because from what I understand is that. They often, they bring everybody in and then they may clear the chambers for deliberation. So like there might be deliberation at a period of time, so everyone's going to have to clear out. And they might swap out people or swap out, you know, whether people stay the full day or just a couple of hours. And I'll be working on some of those details and send that out as soon as I get kind of more details. But from what I understand, that they work often with like a school to bring in a bus of, of kids of a certain age, whether those high school or kids are studying social studies to. Like one class will get the, be able to be in there for like one session, take them out, another class, and then there'll be other public seats as well. like one class will get the, be able to be in there for like one session, take them out, another class, and then there'll be other public seats as well. The museum commission, as you may recall, uh, authorized us to purchase items from the PBA auctions regarding to rickets and Steinbeck. We had, um, three documents that we were able to purchase. A lot of these documents went for much higher than I expected. The physical objects from the Western Flyer were not sold, they were, that were auctioned from the Frye collection. Either the, the steering, the navigation, those pieces in there. But the ones that I bid on that did successfully win was, was a statement of assets and liabilities from the lab. And I found this really interesting because at the time, Ed is talking about, you know, Steinbeck owning a number of shares of the lab. Also how minimal amount of money he actually got from, uh, between Pacific Tides, how he was not, he never really made much money off of that book, as well as the minimal publishing revenue from C F Cortez and how much he says, I owe John X number of dollars, because John financed the trip. And this, so it's, it's a statement of like what he owns and doesn't. It's a really, it's, to me, it's an interesting kind of a, a document that he had typed up. The letters and notes from Ed Junior, religion, Ed Senior, I think this one's really fascinating, because it's a, it's a binder, or not a binder, obviously, what he, bound, bound volume that Ed Junior had typed up regarding a lot of different correspondence. And so from the, on the researcher's side, it's not the original documents, but on the research side, it's a lot of, of interesting correspondence that was done in like Ed Junior's reflections on fatherhood. So there's a lot of really interesting documents that are on there. I was really glad to get that piece right there. And then there's, um, Ed reflecting on the morphology of the C of Cortez. And this was later printed in the book Outer Shores by Joel Hedgebath. So we didn't get a lot off of there and I was prudent, because there were some items that I wanted, but they were going far higher, um, than I expected. And that was, you know, a bit unfortunate, but I'm glad to get some of these items into the public side of, when we have them now in the California history.
Could you tell who was fitting the higher amounts?
No. So one thing, I guess I, I have not bid on an online auction like that before, so I can say I was also confused on. Because when they had the booklet, it said bid 11 AM, um, you know, 11 AM Pacific time and on that date, February 7th or whatever that was. And so I thought that was when all the bids were due. And so there was all of this pre-bidding that was happening for the week or two prior, and I was bidding and I was like, oh, great. I won 12 different documents and I've fitted into the budget we've been allocated. This is fantastic. 11 8 AM happened and all of a sudden the live bid started and what we had been bidding on for the past two weeks became the starting bid. And then it became a matter of the live bidder, the live call and people just putting it in there. And either calling it in or doing that. So it became more than we had expected, because I thought we were bidding at that time up until 11 AM for the final item. And I was really, so that was unfortunate. So it was just, it's a lesson on my part for understanding the process that different auction agencies use for, for that. And then the master fee schedules, um, is, was approved on Tuesday. And what I added on there was an hourly staff costs for filming at historic buildings. And you'll see this and California State Parks are at other sites, which is basically when we have a request to film at Colton Hall, or if we have a request to film at Pacific Biological Labs, we need to have a staff person there when person is filming. But we don't have a fee schedule for how much we're charging this for filming. So oftentimes staff go over there and we're not charging somebody, but it's staff time, we're very limited in term, in terms of the number of staff and staff time we have there. So this is cost recovery for us to bring somebody over there to allow you to film at the lab and do that work. And as well as there's a film permit, um, fees, so people that come in for filming around the city of Monterey, that used to be done in the police department. And the police, the person in the police department resigned, and so it went first to conference center, but I'm, we're going to take it over here, because it'll be also another source of revenue that will go back to the general fund. But it's the, the side of like Singapore, increased revenue and activity from the museums department, in my opinion, to see that. We also tie, there's a lot of historic resources, people tend to film for, um, harbor, this is commercial filming. So harbor, historic buildings, or places like Deep Frame. So this would be, the, the film permits would go through us and then we would charge them appropriately. And then Lower Presidio Historic Park, um, was presented to the city council on March 18th. That's also on YouTube, so I presented that, because our assistant city manager, Nat Roger Sotero, was sick. But just kind of a, a longer overview of, of the full process of what we're looking at. So I recommend commissioners watch that if you haven't. But the next steps are looking at, um, having a survey online at Have Your Say Monterey. So I'll be working with assistant city manager and city manager's office on this. And then the results are going to be presented to the boards and commissions from three different commissions, Historic Preservation Commission, Museums and Cultural Arts, and Parks and Recreation. All of them, all of our, these different commissions have different, uh, connections to, to Lower Presidio Historic Park. And then we'll identify one commissioner to participate in further, um, community charrettes and workshops. So there'll be, we'll come back after that part to assign a commissioner and appoint. And they'll conduct community charrettes, workshops to discuss the future and options for the park. And present recommendations to council in 2026. So the goal is to come back into 2026 with that.
What's a charrette?
I think it's like an act, interactive, this is a term from Nat, but I believe it's like an interactive kind of a, you have like, you know, putting, posting up your preferences up on a board, like, you know, you have like interactive kind of a workshop. Happening for a community workshop, basically. You'll set up your preferences for like, what do you most like to see on these facilities? And then our, uh, architectural resources group just sent, we just sent back, I mean, we just received this, I believe yesterday, the day before, was the estimates for accessibility updates on Pacific Biological Laboratories. And this is what we present, talked about with the, the subcommittee. And I'll be sharing that with the subcommittee and we'll bring this back at one of the future meetings. Is a, the rest estimates go from 1.8 to $2 million.
And that's for the elevator along the walkway?
That's for the elevator along the walkway.
Oh, that seems incredibly exorbitant.
It's a couple of different pieces. It's, it's the elevator, it's a restroom, it's the removal of some of the concrete to create a decking along the back. So you have to have like the walkway along the back. It's a, it's the elevator going to, from the, the easement down and up. So you gotta go, you gotta go down to the, the landing area and to go up on that area. But this is just their construction estimates and I'll bring it back to the subcommittee.
We're going to have our engineering department look at that estimate also.
We, we sent it over to them, but we didn't get any kind of like major flags in terms of costs from, from anybody, but we did send it over.
Wow, 1.8 to 2 million.
Yeah. And so that's, yeah, exactly. It's a huge number. And, um, we want to talk about next steps. So I'd like to bring that forward also. I'll talk, I'll reach out to the subcommittee on that, but then we'll bring that forward. And then our Emil Norman panels, um, have been installed at the Stanton Center. So if you get a chance, please take a look at those. Those are at the, near the base of the first floor staircase and along the wall. Just really, they look really beautiful. There's a LED backlit now. The colors really pop out of there and they've been restored. And we're looking at loaning out the Two Dolphins and having those restored as well. And so the, the funding from that is from the Emil Norman Trust. And there are funds from the Emil Norman Trust for restoration and they really see the, two of the works that are, that are actually in the city's collection are really representative of Emil Norman's work. And one is the Two Dolphins and the other one was the Casa Munras, um, panel. So those are really great to see those ones there in there. So if you get a chance, please check those out. And, um, our artifacts, specialist, um, Brianna has been, she's been working on updating our catalog records. So it's, we're going through a lot of different records and also tracking our incoming and outgoing loans. Because what we're finding is that we don't always have agreements, we don't have documents, loan agreements have expired. We have stuff at like Monterey Museum of Art. You know, we have items that were from California State Parks, we have stuff from Monterey History and Art Association. And we want to go through and make sure that we are, we have everything on file of what have we loaned out to people? What is coming into us? What are agreements out there? So we have accurate records. So we've been working on that quite a bit. We're also working on doing a, what's, uh, transferring our records on from what's called Past Perfect. It's like our archiving platform into Catalog It. And we're going to test that out to see if that's better, because then we could put forward a public facing website. So people would be able to see what we have in our collections. And then we did, there's a Northeast Document Conservation Center that N E D C C, they do the Ready or Not Emergency Preparation Consult, Consultation. Also say this is also IMLS funded. And this one, we looked at just our collections, our vault and our garage of like, how are we storing things? What do we have? If there's an emergency, what do we prioritize? How do we take out? What are the conditions of all those things? And, um, our, and Francesca worked on coordinating the, um, docent opportunity with Don Kors at Hopkins Marine Station. And we had a great group of docents and staff over there talking about, um, just Ed Ricketts. And if you haven't been, Hopkins, Don Kors is a historian over there and librarian, and they have a extensive collection at that site. And so we are also working with our CSU MB service leaders that are coming into this work on our museum sites. And looking at recruiting new volunteers on the site. And as, as Commissioner Kimsey was asking about some of the interns, like that's when we have, a lot of times they have a limited number of hours of like what they need to complete. But when we have concerts or anything like that, we have to have opportunities for our commit, you know, for interns, those are good to have like opportunities for them to help. It's when we post out those specific. And then, um, and Francesca coordinated the outreach booth at the Western Flyer sendoff. And yeah, that's a, we had a squid craft that was, um, originally, I think designed by Ron, who, who was also Ron Provost, one of our docents who was also working on the Western Flyer that day. So that's kind of what we've been up to and happy to answer any questions we may have.
You mentioned the meeting coming up about budget. Do you want any commissioner's participation, uh, in that meeting?
No, I mean, that's specifically staff meeting. It's not, we don't have commissioners or, or library trustees in those meetings. I think if there are comments, it's when we have the, the public sessions of, when the public sessions go to council. If there are times on that, like if we bring forward presentation and if the commission wants to expand access to Colton Hall or wants more programs or whatever that is, I think that would be the appropriate time for commissioners to comment at that time, when they're reviewing the changes to the, to the budget.
You know, when the council will be making a decision on the budget, it's usually in June, isn't it?
It's usually in June and they, and I, I, I'm not sure the exact date, but you know, they meet on the Tuesday, on the Tuesdays in June. So we can, we'll get that when we have the budget and I have more information, I'll share that with, with the full commission and give you guys the date of when that would be. And we have Dennis here too, if you guys have any questions.
Further activities. Commissioner comment?
Well, uh, we watched the, the flyer go around the point. You know, it's a rough evening for sure. They paused off of, uh, Lover's Point for about 20 minutes, I think, sort of sizing up the size of the swells. But then they went around the point and it was bumpy, but, you know, off they go.
The only item I would, I, I have is to encourage, uh, you, uh, this Saturday, the Museum of Art is having, I think it's their third block party. And they have various, uh, I mean, art and music and all that. It's, it's quite a great community event. They closed down Kelly P. and, and, uh, our group, the Monterey Foundation is having 20 artists do, uh, paintings of various adobes in the downtown area, which will be sold, uh, that afternoon.
I have nothing.
And we see that Lockton House will also be opened. They will have those, their, their art, art accounts.
Right.
Come on down to Lockton.
And I think they're doing a special event at the old Casa Cateras.
They are.
Yeah, it was in today's paper or something.
Yeah, they have art opening it as a good year, yeah.
And if you don't have that block party, you come down to J A P L Hall. Such a cheering for the hall. Assistant period, you know, the father, yeah. Randy, Randy Sonmar's Market for almost 100 years and a $10,000 or a $1,000. But also, uh, Thursday, Monday, sixth, the one, we didn't have an entry of J A P L Hall. Originally Japanese Film Creation Hall, opened on May 2nd, 1926. And they're planning a whole year long period of program starting July of this year. Cause it was abalone, there's lots of Japanese Monterey, we're going to do, uh, weekend events. So all the abalone, it would be a, a big abalone festival. There's music, uh, luxury, the rockin' jurors, and we have those books. White abalone coming down, like a white abalone, working game with that. Most ones, the only do coming in the dark, especially, uh, abalone dance, you are dumb on. So, 26th of the whole three, the program, films and the movie theater and all kinds of.
Tim, what time is, uh, this Saturday's event? One. And goes for.